Risk now or and will this issue give us any any benefit from from a possible ransomware attack in the future?
And to put it quite bluntly, that is something that keeps me up at night because we are vulnerable. In a lot of cases, we have benefited from what is called security through obscurity. You know, we're less of a target than some other things, but now I've said that on the internet, so it's not working.
Yeah.
We we do have Okay. We do have measures in place, but of course, these things get more sophisticated. And a meeting with people all the time about methods for endpoint protection. Because this is as simple as somebody on our network opening the wrong link in an email. And one thing that we're doing to try to be proactive about that is we are through our insurance provider municipal association. Looking to institute more training and trying to do something where we can test people's, you know, are you the one who's opening emails and clicking on bad stuff? That is a proactive educational step. But we need to make sure, and this is an everyday battle, that we're looking at what we need to do about isolating and locking down anything that does. And it could be my computer. I don't want to give the impression that that people would be done dumb if they did it. One of these tests I went through in another community actually involved AI voice generation where the HR director called me and left a long message about important information that she needed right away, and I would swear to you it was her, but it was a test by our insurance company. And I failed.
So.
I actually emailed her the information, which was what they were trying to get, and a bunch of people did. But so we will work on making sure we're as secure as possible.
So if if we have, so you we've got data backup now, though, so if we were locked down, we could recreate our system, our data.
Correct.
Even right now.
Yes.
Okay. And we can make it, we can have a resolution to outlaw AI on, can we do that? Just while we're at it.
And when when you have a physical hardware backup, that that's what I hope to do is that you can actually stagger it. So you might miss six hours of copy over. But that way, if you catch that you've got a ransom screen that popped up in that intervening six hours, you can call them and go, hold it up, disconnect the two systems and then you flush everything. And so we're working.
Thank.
That's a good thing to work.
How long before that's up and running?
Um, I hope to get some information back this week on the expense of setting that.
I don't think we have any option. I mean, we need to do that immediately.
Yes, I'm assessing. What's Dan telling?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, finance director's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other questions by administrator? All right. Miss Mandy has financial director.
Well, I'm going to stay on comments for the budget discussion. I just wanted to see if anybody had questions on my reports. No questions.
What's the last question, man? On your main summary page on the one? There are two bank accounts at the bottom. One's called the South State seized account and South State PEPY account. I'm just curious what those two are.
Thanks over here on police account.
Okay, okay. All right. I I knew there was something, but I just didn't know what they were. So.
To remind me what the acronym PEPY is, it's.
Some cheap beach. Can you help me with that? Just I'm learning that. It's a it's a.
It's an informant.
Product, yeah.
So then something evidence and informants.
Yes. I think it's awesome to highlight that we reached the core stringing during five percent discount in the Smurf brandies.
Yes.
Sales.
And I thank Ms. Hesp for leading that up and we did encourage and then require all employees to take some courses so that we could get that discount. But it's significant and important to show that we're being proactive on such things.
And is there anything I am waiting to give you in this revenue revenue expenditure segment? There's some specific questions about, but I could say that's all we say.
Um, it's well, if you want to discuss them now on Wednesday, do you?
Just anything they wanted to highlight?
Uh, not particularly. I think it would be better to pass everything out in a work session. Okay.
I have just one more quick question for you, Mandy. On your on the report, the current report, we have the current period year to date budget. Is the budget column in your report, is that prorated for the year to date number? Is that like the total year and it just, does that make sense when I'm asking?
Which column?
Uh, the the third column. Yeah, let me just. So like this column here, is this based on where we would, is it prorated for the time of year that we all are?
No, this is our current fiscal year budget.
For the entire fiscal year. Okay. Okay.
The current year to date of like, um.
So this this year today, though, why is it the same as the current period?
Yeah, because typically you you your year to date and your current period, unless you, oh.
I mean, we we've got same numbers
Yeah.
in the current period. So what is the current period?
The current.
Is the year to date. So that we're not doing like a quarterly or a monthly period. It's all just, it's just one lump. But so really, we don't need two columns in.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now approval of minutes, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting, the April twenty third special call town hall meeting, and April the twenty eighth, twenty twenty five work session.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April fourteen twenty twenty five regular meeting. Do you want me to do these all together? Is that okay? The April twenty third twenty twenty five special call town hall meeting in the April twenty eight twenty twenty five work session.
Thank you.
My second.
It's been second. Rins for question.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, so you correct me if I'm if I if I'm if it doesn't make sense. But in the minutes from the special call meeting on April twenty third, it was noted on the third page under environmental and contamination risk that the property that was being discussed, Wolf Creek School Road, that there was an active federal superfund site less than one hundred yards from the proposed annexation property. It was that the exact quote from the from the meeting? And if so, was it accurate and should there be a footnote?
Fuck around.
I just, I didn't know there was a superfund site within a hundred yards.
Determining these stuff and acting.
Man, I know there is a superfund site nearby, but it's not a hundred yards. It's not even probably.
I think that's bold mistake.
Okay, all right. So you you feel like this was accurate to what was said. Is it appropriate to have a footnote to correct the record? If something is inaccurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I change? Do I need to change my motion?
Yeah, we'll just call these.
Okay, so I move to approve the, I agree with Kelsey. I agree to approve the minutes from April fifteenth to fourteenth twenty twenty five, April twenty eighth twenty twenty five. And amend the minutes of the April twenty third twenty twenty five meeting to include a footnote on the item regarding environmental and contamination risks on page three.
There's a, I'm gonna have a second call based on second, the only problem, thank you so much, Kelsey. Any other question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Issue members. First reading of fiscal year budget ordinance number twenty twenty five dash O two F Y twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Mr. Administrator.
Mayor and council, just to make sure we're all on a similar page with the state mandated schedule for the approval of our budget, there's one ordinance that we know that the city of Pickens will pass each and every year. And that is a budget ordinance because we cannot operate. And the timing and the public hearing requirements are prescribed fairly strictly in law. We've already met the the first benchmark for a council form of government. The administrator and finance director presented a proposal for a balanced budget that estimates revenues at ten million nine hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars and expenditures of the same, thus being balanced. The schedule requires a public hearing with notice being published in the newspaper of general circulation fifteen days before second reading and final approval of that budget. Uh, we are at this point running up against June thirty, which will be the end of our current fiscal year. And we don't we don't have continuing resolutions like the federal government does. So as I was explaining to a couple of council members before we got started, the real task tonight or this week, if we choose to to put it off, is not to vote to endorse or approve the staff generated document that you've received. With any proposals for any line items, it is by title only to keep the schedule and say, we will have a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And then, as you know, Wednesday, we will begin with what could be an all day at ten AM budget work session to go through council priorities and line by line. The some ten billion nine hundred thousand dollar proposal has been prepared for you and either completely change it or, you know, look to make sure it reflects. So a vote tonight on first reading would not be, and the motion would specifically need to say by title only, which would be just the top line that says a an ordinance to account for the the spending for the city of Pickens for the upcoming fiscal year, which would be twenty five, twenty six. So just as long as that is clear, we do have and will get all in the weeds and run through each line item of projected revenues and expenses. All the funds involved on Wednesday and then try to make sure that we're incorporating the best interest of the city and the wishes of council. That said, any questions that you have about specific line items that are in the proposal? But just keep in mind that we're not, the intent, unless council so wishes, is to just approve first reading by title only. Council can certainly take the staff proposed budget and give it a first reading. But I would recommend it again against it because council is not spent time workshopping that information. Any question?
Tim, I have a question. My Mr. Mayor, thank you. On the first page, and this is just for clarification purposes, I've seen it a couple of times. But in here on the first page, under the estimated mileage that you have there, just as a it's a footnote more or less, and it says the mileage equals eighty six point three percent of one thousand of assessed property value. I'd like to make sure that's corrected to say it's eighty six point three mils per thousand.
Yes, so Mandy, could you make a note of that? We'll make sure the language is correct.
Eighty six point three percent per thousand would be a really, really high tax rate.
Yeah, just correct this.
And it is a mill because I think there's three or four things like that we're going to correct on Wednesday.
Wanted to make sure the public understands we are not pulling a fast one on the mill.
Okay. But the current proposal does, and just another note that we will be discussing Wednesday, this is a reassessment year. So we will be at some point, probably after our budget is approved in the fall, we'll be looking at the the numbers for, because property values have risen in the county tax rolls, so we will look at rolling back or adjusting our mileage. Not necessarily rolling it back, but we are capped to a certain amount. You can't realize a windfall from the fact that the the property value increases. Just know that that process will be upcoming.
All right, any other questions? Police have a motion?
Lots on Wednesdays.
I think Wednesday is going to be an opportunity to really turn over every stone and look at it very closely.
Quick question. Can anybody stay off the top of their minds when the last time that the city of Pickens increased their mileage was? I believe it's been over five years.
There's been way over five years.
Yeah, close to ten years. Do you remember exactly your name? It was just a point of information I wanted.
Well, can we find out? We can find out different. But it was not of any time soon.
Right, right.
Yeah. It may have been coincident. There was certainly an adjustment five years ago at the last reassessment, but you have to extrapolate whether that was actually an increase, if it was just reset. But in increase, we'd have to go back for.
Thank you.
The floor is open for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we accept entitle the first reading of the budget at this fiscal year, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget.
I second it.
Been moved and proper.
And that was entitled only.
Entitled only.
Could you please provide the ordinance number?
Ordinance number twenty twenty five O two F Y twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Perfect. It's been properly moved and seconded. No questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposes? All right, five one. Let's move on. Now we will schedule our work session.
Well, I believe that since we we did have to skip the twelfth to the nineteenth, we did some work on that in between. We do have, as mentioned earlier, an in-depth work session set for this coming Wednesday at ten AM. And we'll go until everybody falls out. And then I don't know if council wants to look at, based on this agenda item, potentially setting aside some additional time or if you want to get through Wednesday and then look to how much you feel you've gotten done and what you need to do additionally.
Okay, is there a is there amount of time that we should cap this particular meeting? Or do we feel like we we got to just run as far as we can before the end of the day?
Well, I think Wednesday, when we help meet at ten o'clock, that will determine how much more we'd have to do. But I think that we ought to put forth a schedule together to where if we need to go further, we don't have to go back and forth with the schedule.
Are Wednesdays, I guess, sense that Wednesdays are potentially better?
Right with it is some meat.
It doesn't necessarily have to be during the day, though.
It could be when council wishes. And keep in mind that I don't believe we're in an emergency situation. We've got forty days. And we can get lots of work done on a budget in that amount of time. So whatever council wishes to be.
I'll take any kind of recommendations before it's scheduled inside. We're going to have Wednesday all day.
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
Look, the only suggestion I may add, I don't know if we can do this right now, but it's a possibility to start earlier. Do what nine instead of ten?
I can't.
That would help me out because I, yeah.
This Wednesday or future, as you wish.
Okay. Yeah, that's already been posed about, if we can amend it or. I can I can be here at nine. I can be here at eight.
We do have time to amend the notice.
Would nine o'clock be suitable for everyone?
Be better for me.
Yeah, it would be better for me as well.
You're quiet. I have no, I have no opinion on the time. If you said six AM, I'll be here.
Right.
Six AM it is.
I cannot do six AM, sorry. But I think that's a good suggestion to go earlier. And I personally am keeping the twenty eighth open, which is the following Wednesday, since it seems to be the most suitable day for everyone. If we need to do another maybe morning session, but I think that we should wait until after this Wednesday to decide whether that's necessary or not.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
My opinion.
Yes.
Let's see how much we get.
Yeah, if you want to schedule upcoming, if that helps you, that's fine.
I was hoping to help you all so you can have a definite time that you set aside. If anybody's just good, we could probably, I know can take care of those two meetings.
Can you make?
Everywhere.
You make the following Wednesday, if we need to meet?
I should be able to, yeah. So I'll be tied up in the morning. Stanley has a courtyard in Anderson.
On the floor.
Later.
On the fourth.
On the twenty eighth.
About twenty.
Well, we have determined a time after we get to a fiscal front. And I might not even have to have it.
I'll have staff block out Wednesday's upcoming, just in general, and be careful about scheduling things.
Okay.
That's good. We we can hold the meetings here both times if we're not going to go outside.
Yeah, I think right here.
Okay.
Everybody agree with me? I was right. Discussion as relates to the city picking zoning ordinances. I just be put on because I want us to start thinking about it in the future. Our zoning ordinances as far as when we have other people come up with big developments. I want us to start thinking about having something in place that you have to go by law. To one of the things I stated, even if we do approve this amendment, I mean, an annexation this time, I never want us to lose our identity. And I want to see if we can now start putting some stuff down in our ordinances to make sure that we secure that.
Right.
This is just open for discussion. I just wanted to get you to start thinking about it. There's other things that we want to talk about, and I want you to look at all of the ordinances. And we can really start to to change them also. Therefore, best suit us if we're in the future. Does anybody have anything you like to add?
Mr. Mayor, are we, are you saying you want us to review and 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 look at our entire zoning ordinance in its entirety to to consider changes or updates to it in its entirety, not just one part of it, not just one aspect?
I mean, if it's other things, I thought we could take care of everything. It might not be anything else, but I'd like for you to review it at least and and maybe come into some items from other thread headings.
And we're talking about our existing zone.
Yeah, processes. Okay.
What's when it's.
What is the highlight that's holding right now? I would like to do that. I would like to really highlight that.
When when we hired him and council started, when we met with the attorney, I think at least those of us for here, our attorney recommended, you know what I mean, that we that we start with our zoning ordinances and that we have them rewritten, you know what I mean? And that that he we could go ahead and make that part of a budget. And we were talking about maybe this this year doing it.
Well, and to Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, we're in the process of completing the comprehensive plan, which really is part of that process. And one thing that we've lacked and and need to do as part of that process is I would strongly recommend a joint meeting or a series of meetings between the planning commission and the city council to discuss the progress on that comprehensive plan that they've been working on. And then we need to match our comprehensive plan, whatever it becomes. And we know that it's beyond past due for updating. But I think that as part of our budget discussions, we can look at additional help from professionals to help us rewrite some problematic areas or just ones that raise questions or impractical with a lot of input from the planning commission and recommendations to council. But let's put together a schedule and try to get you together as a group with the planning commission. If that seems like a good path forward. And that question of annexation, all of the discussions we've had thus far, the development agreement that we worked on is completely outside of our land development and zoning. Because we, the council gave direction that they wanted some far more stringent powers over what would happen. If we want to continue with that kind of thing, it would be best if that development agreement method were enshrined in our code as well.
Okay, anybody else say anything else to me?
I think there's a lot of things in here that need to be addressed. There's also several buildings currently available for purchase on Main Street. And I'm just talking about Main Street. I know there are others on other streets in town. But it's been a great discussion of people that are interested in moving in there, beautifying the outside of the building and having an active option for rental purposes in those units or or buildings, they're not units, but in those buildings. And I think that the that we need to take a a better good look at this. I also think there are several areas that have been missed. I know that we don't have a code enforcement officer. But there are several things in here that I don't believe that we're in compliance with currently in our CBD.
Yeah, she's speaking of section four oh six, I printed off, gave each of the council members.
Regarding CBD is what I'm, I'm sorry, I'm referencing section four oh six.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I do have copies of four oh six if anyone wants.
Mr. Mayor, are we saying that this this section four oh six is the is what we really want to focus on or?
Or I think it's a stem to stern review is called.
I think it's a good place to start, though. This section is is really a good place to start. It also, like, there's mentions about we must provide must provide parking space. There's several mentions about parking spaces that came up recently. So this is another code that contradicts other things that we're currently discussing.
That is a good example that it's very unusual for a central business district to require onsite parking. Typically, those were zero lot line parcels, so it kind of flies in the face of common sense and practicality. So we just need to kind of read through the entire document.
Tim, I think I think that our if the attorney said, and I I think he he said they were so outdated that he could bring them up to date and work with council, you know, in particulars. For us to to bring that up to date by just talking about it, I think it would take us.
It would take forever.
I don't think we could ever do it. So I think we really need to budget that. We need to hire an outside council to bring this up to date, and then we work with them on on the questions that come up.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rogers, that's a great point. I think, though, some of the things that we recently were refreshing memory on, I think it would be great for the planning commission to have the resource to sit down and work with an out outsourced company on revisiting some of this stuff. And then strategically talking about how we can meet with or learn from the planning commission without interfering too much as council in what they're trying to do, if that makes sense. Have them present it to us after having that resource of being able to meet and go through their code.
We we do currently have a a grant application in with the Appalachian Regional Council for a planning grant for just that kind of thing, anticipating that. Hopefully, we will learn shortly whether, and there was a match to that, I think it was seventy five, twenty five. But I agree that it's probably worthwhile whether we we get the grant or not, but. Um, but I agree that it's probably worthwhile whether we, we get the grant or not, but, uh, uh, let me check and see what the announcement date should be on that.
I just think, yeah, that's great. I just think the point that I'm trying to bring forward is that this really is the Planning Commission. And I want to entrust them with deliberating this instead of council just sitting down arguing about words in it. Have them present us something that that group of our city residents has reviewed and looked at and agreed upon. Bring it to us and we can.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of stuff.
Work, work with them like Tim said, I think, I think we should be doing that. But, but let's, let's try to, maybe we can bring that up on Wednesday about, I don't know if we, we want to wait until we.
I think we.
Learn about the grant.
Heard about the grant. Do you know when you'll hear about that?
I'd have to check back. I think that the, um, for so many that we applied for, I think it was late March or early April. So we wouldn't be getting the announcement yet, but I can check on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Hep.
Consider. Absurd. Sounds good. All right, any output? Question? All right, I need a motion to enter into executive session. Motion to enter into executive session with city auditor to discuss twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three financial audit and possible claims relating there are to as allowed by South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy-eight.
Two. I make said motion, want me to read it?
No, sir.
I make a motion enter executive session.
That's sick.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
Thank you. Any question? Follow the favor, raise your right hand. Pete. Missy Van. There to me.
Do not.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene from executive session into regular order.
I second it. Let's drop the mood and second. Hope everybody may for raise your right hand. All right. Dude, hurt it. We had a, a meeting with Green Finney, our accountant, the auditors. And we've come to find out is from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. It was a unreconciled funds of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that has not been found. So this council wasn't in seated at that time. So we're going to try to get, um, who was the company?
Manly Garvin.
Manly Garvin. That's helping us reconcile our books to see if they can find that within the next two weeks. Um, that's one of the things we wanted to really do as we move forward to really understand where we're at and where we're going. Um, I thank everybody for being here. I thank all Green Finney for helping us along this way. And we're going to really be able to do some things now that we're being able to see our way as far as what's going on with the budgets that had been produced. So at this time, I entertain, um, a motion to have action from this information.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to direct Manly Garvin to continue to, to locate an unreconcilable amount of a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars as it relates to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit and report back to us in two weeks before we discuss a forensic audit possibility.
Last, did I have a second? All say votes? We have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's you then. Thank you. And just to give information, that's just one audit. We still have another audit. So that's, you can do anything for the city, pray for us if you can get through all this and it's going to be just fine. At this time, are there any comments from council?
Were we going to revisit the dates that we were talking, that we needed to talk about?
What's that?
Wednesday and Thursday and.
No, we, oh, yeah. We were going to try to, um, get together as far as about the annexation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Y'all, I'm sick. I'm so sorry. I'm out of, uh, and we were going to do that, but we had for and against. A lot of people that's for it doesn't want to say anything because they're worried about being harassed and bullied. Uh, so we're going to try to revisit a chance to where we can get together in the future. We're going to do it openly this week, but that can't happen until we really get everybody on board. Uh, we don't want to just have developers and, and, uh, all work forward with the case because council is going to hear both sides as far as the, uh, as far as the facts are concerned, and then we're going to go ahead and put it on the agenda to vote.
Mr. Mayor, just a thought, but I personally feel and that some of the citizens that I've spoken with directly feel as though we've heard from the developer, that was the purpose of the town hall. We've heard from owner multiple times. Um, we've heard from many, many citizens that are opposed to this. Some of us has talked to and heard from business owners and citizens that are for it. Um, the people that I've spoken to have said, we want to hear council's opinion before they vote or why they're voting, which way they're voting and let council members speak the facts and the truth. So that's just what I've heard. Um, I think we've heard a lot about this. I know that we've got Naomi Reed scheduled for Thursday, so we need to also probably give her a heads up. Um, but that's just, that's just my opinion, just throwing that out there. Not saying that it's a bad idea to hear it again. I'm happy to hear it as many times that people want to tell me a bit.
Right.
Um, I think it's important for us as council members who are raising our hands to vote on this, to speak to why we are for or against it.
Right.
And to answer some of the questions that have already been proposed.
We can do that in a regular council meeting. I, I think we not have to have this extra public session.
Agenda is going to be just like last time. We, we would have a place for people to sit. And I want them to think that we're trying to keep, yeah, to be a car. Now, I got up and I have the ability as mayor to, to schedule meetings, but council does too. Uh, and you could have consensus of whatever council wants, I could go along. Uh, I just wanted to give everybody an ample opportunity because we went through a lot of feelings and a lot of people told what they thought and what they felt. And then I wanted one meeting to just state the facts. And then once we deal with the facts, then we can come as council when we're ready to vote and state why we're voting and whatever way you're voting. Uh, this is a very complicated, sticky subject. Uh, but I think we can get through this. But it's up to council to be able to be willing. I'm going to stop getting meetings and, and it spurred a moment. I'm a preacher, man. I can't help it. It just, it just hits me sometime. It's embarrassing. I said, this is a good opportunity to get people together. I had a problem when we had the water situation. I didn't talk to council and I said, yeah, with me. When I got to talk to council, they didn't want to go together because they'd already made a decision. So that being said, I promise you as council, I'm looking at that. I will never help it through that again. I'll talk to all of you before something like that happened. So what are your feelings as far as meeting the guy? You just let me know. I'm for doing it, but that, that I'm just one voice.
I think since, in my, just my opinion that we, we have already heard from everybody. And I think we all have made up our minds through our public discussions and our own research. How we're going to fall out on this and maybe we need to share it before we vote. I don't mind doing that.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think we need to waste any more time. I don't think it's going to sway anybody's opinion in here. I, I think it's, I think we all know, we've heard it enough. And I, I think it might be just settle the city down one way or another. We, if we're going to vote against it or for it. We just go ahead and get it done. Because we, this needs to go to the planning commission. We're going to go that way. You know, and then there's still a whole lot that has to be decided through the planning commission. The city needs to understand that even if we vote for this, it can still be a no because the planning commission could come back and say, absolutely not. We can't do the things that you're asking. And then council will vote, would vote it down, you know, so I think that we, we, we got, we have to get it either a no or we have to get it to the planning commission so that we can know where we're going. So we can be in good faith, begin to have a contract in front of us because we don't have a contract in front of us. You know, and we don't, we don't know about the water, but my understanding, we, we can't even discuss it. The water rights, you know, until we have a good faith first decision, you know what I mean, from council first, Bill, that we, we want to do this. So that's like a good faith. You know, offer that yes, we want to do this. So I, I don't think we can, we can go any further unless we do something.
Councilman, you mean, so in other words, we need to vote on the annexation step one and then we need to push with it. We're not voting if we were to vote on this sooner rather than later, not having the, the additional meeting. We would be voting on the annexation, not on the size of the lot or the nitty gritty of the development agreement, correct?
Right.
That's the understanding that I have.
Right, we're just opening it up, giving the planning commission, and we still have to, you know, settle this contract with, with a developer. You know, so all that has to be settled and, and I, I have to agree to it. And so all you guys have to agree to that contract. You know, before we could, our second vote would say yea or nay, and that's going to be the important vote.
Yes, sir, councilman. I would like to remind you that it is my understanding that the property owner is not seeking annexation unless they know the development agreement will be agreed to. So you can't vote on it if there's not an application for it.
Where we.
They, I believe there is an application for annexation.
Is there, there is an application that has been presented to council?
For annexation, yes, it was presented to the previous council.
Been twice it was tabled, then they renewed it in October and, uh, actually came in today and filed some technical physical provided to this week. But yeah, he's repeatedly petitioned for it. So.
Without a, without an agreement.
The, the, the basic process is that the, the owner of the property says, I want to annex. And then all the conditions and everything that we've added on top of it are the conditions that this council or your predecessors have set to say, we, we will not bring it back until we have a draft agreement and we have the plan. That's still ongoing. As you said, we, we do have the draft agreement, but we don't have, um, a signed.
A sign one.
Which it's a chicken and an egg. You won't get the signed agreement until it goes through the planning commission and the water question is answered and the, that it's all a catch twenty-two.
Right.
And the three, the, the important thing is that, that most across the state of South Carolina, most annexation or even subdivision, uh, site plans are conditionally approved. And sometimes there are pages of conditions that have to be met prior to any ground being broken or anything moving forward. In this case, uh, in, in, in the case of an annexation, it's very often that there are conditions that are applied that must be met prerequisite, um, to any final approval or, uh, motion for.
But so in my mind, just again, and I'll shut up, I think that we should take it to that level. You know, we should go to that step, you know what I mean, and let that begin to develop. Otherwise, we, we don't have anything else to talk about. Unless it's just going to be, no, we're not doing this. So if we, if we're going to give you and give this a chance that we, then we go ahead and have our first. You know, if we make a motion to go ahead and send this to the planning commission based upon, and I think there were a whole lot of things that we can put in there, you know what I mean?
That comes.
Signed contract.
That comes after the first reading.
After the first reading. So we'd have to do the first reading. You know, and then we have based upon, you know, we will have a second reading based upon the signed contract, water agreement. You know, we could go right down, we could, we could just put them all, all those things on the record.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me just make sure I'm clear that right now this annexation request has to be voted on.
Yes.
I mean, there's no going back. There's, it's been tabled, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been withdrawn. Okay. And, and we need to have a, my, my, my hope in having the, the roundtable, which is what I thought it would be more like a roundtable of a limited number of folks to, to say, here are the, you know, the ten things that are bother us about this development and, and we'd have an equal number of, or, or whatever, pros and cons written out and then discussing why those are either legitimate pros or legitimate cons or they're not. That was one thing I thought we, we were going to accomplish with another meeting. Not necessarily to be an open forum, public thing, but just more or less that, that the, that folks who can talk intelligently about development, because to me, it's not just this specific development. This is the groundwork for what we do in the future and future development of this kind. Um, and I, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to try to lay to rest or at least to flesh out potential issues that we want to address, not hope that they don't happen or do happen or whatever that they're, you know, so I, I still feel like there's a value to having some type of forum. And not necessarily, not a public thing in the sense that everybody has a chance to talk, but just those who can actually speak honestly about not their concerns, but that actual pros or cons to, to what is being presented here, which will be the groundwork for a future conversation.
On our future development.
Does that make sense?
How do we do?
You have a, they, they, they only will dictate that. You'll, you'll have a moderator there.
Yeah, I know, but who are these people? Like, we've heard from the lawyers. We, we've heard from all the citizens that they'd want to talk.
You know, I, I, I get it. And it's not that there's anything new. The point is to, 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 to narrow down what are the actual issue, factual issues? I mean, I know people's concerned or they're concerned about this and thing, we're going to be this. I mean, those aren't facts. You know, if, if we say we're, you know, annexing fifty thousand acres specifically so we can have fifty thousand subdivisions, that would be
Yeah.
a fact, right? We, but, but if somebody says, we're worried that this might happen simply because you're worried it might happen, well, I'm worried about a lot of things, but we're not going to vote on them. Have nothing to do. I mean, okay, so where do we, I'm just saying I, my, again, I wanted to, I thought we could use that process to identify and, 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 and counter both good and bad, things that are being thought as being, these are great concerns. We have to address them. Well, okay, let's address them and realize, hey, these are not great concerns. These are just somebody's, we know that a lot of this, the, the negative, of the pro, of the negative and the, and the con is simply trying to thwart a decision. They're, they're not based in fact. They're just saying, we've come up with all these reasons why this shouldn't happen, some of which are legitimate reasons why there might need to be consideration and some of it's just, there's a superfund site a hundred yards away from the site. That, that's not fact. That was just something scared to have to count things. So I'm trying to get past all that and we may not be able to. It may be impossible in this situation. And, uh, given.
But who would, who would these people be? Who do you suggest that we bring out?
Well, that, that is wrong.
And that have all the factors, the other thing, you know, like other than the developer and his people are
Right.
on the forest side, nobody, my neighbor that doesn't mind it coming from everything that she's read, doesn't have every single fact about a superfund and how far hasn't gone to talk.
Well, and whether those things are even relevant, you know, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
They, they could go to.
But then how, how do we also have a moderator that says that's not relevant, that's relevant, that's not relevant? Like Naomi doesn't know.
Both right, rivals don't right. So.
And so it's all right. I said, so was a lot of them proceeding when the.
And what, right? Time up.
Yeah.
Think this. Show of hands before we have, who wants to have this meeting?
Uh, I would have a form of it, but I think that it needs to be.
Two, who doesn't want to have a meeting? Now, I want it just to be public so they wouldn't call Isaiah Sippy or Mike.
Oh.
Before.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, don't do.
I don't think there's people to identify, to bring to this meeting. I don't, I don't know who they are.
And I think that it's up to council to know most of these facts, to have found. And I think that it's up to council to know most of these facts, to have found most of these facts and to be able to back up their vote. It's not our next door neighbors' responsibility to know every single thing about this.
Unless we're gonna hire attorneys and we're gonna bring, I mean, I, I mean, I, I did write a letter before and, you know, council, I, I think council should speak and attorney should speak, you know, and, you know, we should have people that have not spoken before, you know what I mean, and answer questions and so on. But, you know, if we're gonna do it, it's not gonna be seven above, seven against, but it's gonna be the people who are gonna make the decision or the experts on the decision. You know what I mean? Now, something like that, I, I would go for, but we would take, you know, maybe a, a good real estate attorney, you know what I mean, other than our attorney? Or we could bring our own attorney, maybe two, both, you know what I mean, if, if, if council decides it. But it has to be council. It has to be up there, giving their opinion that's a yes, no, and why. I mean, that, that, I agree with Ally, that, that has been an, a concern of, of the citizens that they've spoken to me that, you know, we wanna hear what you think. And why are you, why are you going to oppose or are you going to vote for this? You know, and, and share it with us. So we're gonna put it on the table so we can at least know where you guys are going with this. But I think, again, it's, I, I can't even, what, what I said a long time ago is I would not vote for this if the contract does not run, you know what I mean? If the developer can sell this to someone else, you know, if we don't contract in such a way that it, you know, that, that it runs with it, that, that the contract runs with. And I think, you know, that's been addressed already, you know what I mean, in a way that it can be, it could just be part of the deed, right? So anyway, but there are some issues like that. I mean, until we have a contract, you know what I mean? And there are some other things I wanna see in the contract, but I can't even vote on that second reading. I really, when it goes to the planning commission, can the citizens come and speak to the planning commission? I've never been to one of those meetings. Can they come and give opinions to planning commission about their opinions as to whether this should happen or not and?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I mean, planning commission would have allowed hearings like, like this that, that would also listen to opinions and the planning commission and making their decision for us and coming back to us with an opinion would be hearing from the citizens also.
Yeah.
So I said, we would also be looking at contracts, like I said, all these other things that we had to. Well, we wanted a rendering. We haven't seen a rendering. And they won't give us a rendering and spend the money on it until we get, show them a good faith, you know what I mean? Vote that, yeah, we wanna go this way, you know what I mean? It, that's my understanding of it. And am I wronged him? Is that, is that incorrect? That.
They give, uh, they distributed basically kind of a, a map of lots, lots.
Right. And but they, it's sort of, I mean, he said, I think in the meeting that this is sort of a proposed, you know what I mean? And, and he left everybody wondering. So what I'm thinking about is a definite rendering of what that's gonna look like pretty much. They can't be changed. You know, I, I, I mean, I think that's what it has, I mean, that's what everyone's wanting because they don't want a developer to be going, there's, oh, well, I, I know what I said, but I, you know, I'm gonna have to go ahead and change that now. Well, I don't want that game played. I think that's what John, anyway, councilman.
McManus.
McManus is staying. Anyway, that, that, you know, we, we want to have procedure, but anyway, those are my thoughts.
That's good. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
I'm glad.
Tell me what you think.
Glad we're doing this because the city.
I'm going to be a matter of record.
Of what? Which, what they start, I, I bought it. I agree with him. I mean, I think we should, I mean, we haven't found out about the water issue at all. I don't have anything to, there's just so many. They have some variables that we gotta find out before we can even make a decision.
Right.
Right, or yes or no. I mean, really, this matter. But, um, account to us, see, I just don't think that, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, it's not that I don't wanna hear the public account. It's just that I think we've all heard several times and I just don't think that's productive at this point, so rather than getting somebody from the water people to come here, maybe you're a DOT or all, so like he said, for the facts to get, so we can make a decision, something like that.
So school board, I mean.
So basically, we, we don't need to bring this up even for a first reading then until we have the answers to this or?
I think we should bring it first. Go ahead, get first week.
They mean, go have it.
If it was just gonna pass.
But if everybody's saying that they don't feel comfortable voting on a first reading or voting on this period until you have answers about X, Y, and Z and X.
I didn't say that. I said, let's have the first reading before we can, we can vote, before those people can provide the answers because they're not gonna provide them.
Okay, so that's what you were meaning to?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that way we can, our, our second reading would, would, would be the time we council decided yes or no against this. The first reading would just be, yeah, we, planning commission, you know, and the contract and everything is on the table. And we would have the developer back in here talking to us about it. I mean, and we want, and then we could haggle over the contract because we don't even have numbers with him yet, you know what I mean? As there's so many things that we need from them. So I, I want that contract, you know, that all of us to agree to it, you know what I mean? So, and we can't even discuss it with him anymore. I mean, it's been what, a year and a half?
That's what they've been on.
Yeah, so it's like, they're not gonna, they're not gonna spend any more time on this with council until we say yes or no, we're going to do this. At least give them a good faith answer that we're willing to, to look at it. Now, let's, let's.
Let's nail, nail it down.
Yes, nail it down.
So right now, if you don't wanna move forward, why would they move forward until we move forward?
Right.
So it's, it's our time. It's our time to step forward to the first step, then they'll take the next step.
Right.
Then one right after another.
Along with the planning commission.
Right. Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, I'm gonna go on the record of just saying that, um, that, the, the, the thing I wanna do can be done before first reading, after first reading. It just needs to be done before a final decision. Cause it's what's gonna determine. I feel like we have to, there's no question about the first reading where it's tabled, that, that, and it's not being withdrawn. So why wait? Let's go ahead and just vote on it at the next available opportunity and accept the annexation on first reading and get the ball rolling on planning commission and other conversations that need to be had to get us the facts, cause I, I gotta have more facts. And I, it sounds like I can't get them unless we go to first reading. So let's go to first reading and pass it. If that's what everyone wants to do or the majority wants to do and so that we can begin to nail down answers to, to the other questions and whether that's done in a forum or it's just two people sitting down and say, I got these pros and you got those cons and figuring out and then reporting back. I don't care, but there just needs to be a mechanism and that mechanism seems to be, let's have first reading.
Yeah, I, I agree. That way they could actually have, the citizens could actually have the contract in front of that we have. And we, we look over and say, listen, I don't agree with this and this is why. So they would have something to argue, some facts to present to us to make us look again and say, oh, okay, I, I see what you're saying, you know what I mean? Or the three, the rendering or whatever, you know, I mean, all these things, they would have some facts to discuss with council for, you know.
And I'm not against having an, an open meeting or public meeting. I just want forms when I'm, when I'm concerned.
That's, you know, so I see, that's what I wanted. I wanted a more, um, precise.
Yeah.
Meeting. I wanted something that could really be, like you said, logically and, and, and really thought out by citizens that are for and against it, that could bring facts that we probably didn't know nothing about. So I see, I feel that, that meeting needs to take place before the second reading.
Yeah.
Cause already everybody thought you were dead.
Perhaps just, we have, we have all the information on the table that we need to have.
Could be after the, the planning commission.
Yes.
Yeah, after the. Right, yeah.
But I want to really be able to have, I want, if, I'm gonna be fair because I'm not just the mayor of the people that want annexation, I'm also the mayor of people that don't want it.
Yeah.
And I wanna give them a honest opportunity to state the facts because some of you might be leaning one way and you hear something else, you could say, wait a minute. That's not where I wanna go.
I think that.
Well, at least, yeah, I'm wanting to have one last opportunity.
Yeah.
And that's just fair.
Oh, I agree with that.
Okay.
Once we get all the facts on the table.
All right, before the second reading, let's, you, we get everybody agreeing. I think that'd be productive.
Absolutely, I'll do with that.
Okay, we're in agreement. That's a give and take situation, all right? Cause, um, I like the way you're thinking. Uh, I'm, I'm liking that we doing this openly. And it's gonna be productive, one way or the other.
Yeah.
At least, even though we've gone through a lot of pain, it's been giving us an opportunity to see the passion and the love that people have for this city and for one another. Um, it's gonna be okay. We'll do that.
And we'll have.
On the next agenda.
Yeah, we'll need to have our lawyer here during that meeting, very much like that, so he could ask or answer questions of ours or the city, you know what I mean? That, that they have concerns about.
Gonna be here at least once a month from now.
But definitely during that, that, that meeting that we have with, with the public.
Sure.
Really need him. I, uh, I also wanna say, Mr. Mayor, that we're council and we, we also care. We also represent all the people. You know what I mean? And we, we also care about all their opinions. So I'm, I've, I, I've said that from the very beginning. And I really do want with all the facts on the table, but I, I think I've heard enough for now, you know, we need to move forward now and get all the facts on the table so we can make a rational, logical opinion.
Good, thank you.
Thank y'all so much. We entered.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we adjourn for the night.
I'm taking my, I said.
Thursday, it's been moving signal.
Don't tell.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you.
This will be unanimous. Thank y'all so much.